Again, welcome to everyone, the City of Castle Hills, November 5th, 2019. Zoning Commission Meeting. Castle Hill City Hall, City Council Chambers, 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas, 78213. Agenda Item 1, Call the Castle Hill Zoning Commission Meeting to Order and Determine Quarant is Present. With us this evening, Commissioner Penya, Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Herndon, Commissioner Booth, and I am Chairman Rodriguez. Time is 7:05 PM. Agenda Item 2, Consider Approval of the October 3rd, 2019 zoning meeting minutes. Commissioners, the meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2019 in our packet are several pages. I highly recommend you consider a way that the meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2019 could or should be approved in order to not miss any details and capture as much as possible for transparency purposes to our taxpayers. So again, as I've always done before, here's an example, I repeat an example. I move to accept the City of Castle Hills Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes of October 3rd, 2019 as valid only when coupled in conjunction with the complete City of Castle Hills unedited video and audio of the City of Castle Hills Zoning Commission Meeting of October 3rd, 2019. Any Commissioner can come up with any verbiage as they feel fit for transparency to our Commissioners?
I move that we pass on voting on the zoning minutes. They are lengthy and they're very complicated. Wow, there's a huge echo. And I would feel more comfortable if I had an opportunity to review it in greater detail. I had a hard time figuring out who was actually saying or making certain statements. And this is a very contentious issue, so I would prefer that we pass it and have everybody have an opportunity to review it with a little more time.
Mr. Chairman?
Whoa.
Mr. Chairman, it might be appropriate if Miss Baker's motion is tabled, but would you consider raising the minutes before the next meeting? I guess I'm going to be Mr. Baker.
I amend it to, what did you say? Table it.
Well, yeah, we will accept a motion if someone would like to bring one forward. And what was that again, Commissioner Baker?
I mo- I move that we table the passage or voting on the minutes of October 3rd, 2019 until we've had greater time to review them.
Okay, we have a first by, a motion made by Commissioner Baker, a second by Commissioner Booth. Any additional discussion?
No discussion on a motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Time is now approximately 7:08 PM, and we would like to open the public hearing on proposed amendments from the Zoning Review Committee regarding revisions to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. The discussion will include short-term rentals. Do we have anybody on the list signed up? Thank you so much, Mr. Schnall. The time is approximately 7:09, and we are now closing the public hearing. The time is still approximately 7:09. Agenda Item 4, Discussion and Possible Action on a Recommendation to the City Council on Amendments to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances Based on Recommendations from the Zoning Review Committee. Commission, this is your time for open discussion. Our City Manager, Ryan?
Chairman, thank you. As we discussed this ordinance a few times in a couple of meetings, we've heard from the input from you as Commissioners. I handed out right now, the draft ordinance was in the packet, it had some redline. We've done some additional redlining after review, and so what I was hoping to do was kind of go through some of those points where we redlined, and then y'all can discuss and have any more feedback so we can put some closure to this ordinance, and hoping that we captured all the Commissioners' input on some of these. Part of the process too is Louis Zamiron is here as well, so if there's questions related to inspections, compliance matters, or just general possible violations that a short-term renter who is operating might have, Mr. Zamiron can address those as well. So with the, with, what you have in front of you obviously is the draft there. If you look under 50-01 definitions, under F for a short-term rental, we added language but shall not include habitable accessory buildings as per 50-61 on our current court ordinance. Going further down, under 50-104, under A, we put in there notification that the guests are responsible for compliance with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations pertaining to use and occupancy of the short-term rental, and that guests may be fined by the city for violations of this article. Under B, we put maximum occupancy limits prescribed by the building inspector pursuant to the International Property Maintenance Code, 2015, Section 404.4, occupancy limitations per bedroom, square footage per occupant, and if you'd like, Mr. Zamiron can elaborate on that based on square footage for occupancy. Under swimming pools, that was requested, swimming pool barrier requirements prescribed by the building inspector pursuant to the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2015, Section 305. Under this particular area, they discuss barriers which talk about fencing and height. So we can allude to that as the building inspector for any type of inspections as they apply for a short-term rental to be an operator. Street parking prohibited set forth in Chapter 44 of the Code of Ordinances. So again, it's applicable to what's outlined in that particular code for parking. Under 9, during any period when a short-term rental is occupied or intended to be occupied by guests, the local contact person shall be available 24 hours per day for the purpose of responding to concerns or requests for assistance related to condition, operation, or conduct of guests for the short-term rental. The local contact person shall respond within 60 minutes of being notified of concerns or requests for assistance regarding the condition, operation, or conduct. Under 50-105, notification of complaints we added shall be reported to the city's code enforcement office during business hours or to the police department after business hours. Down here under here, 50-108, permit suspension or revocation appeal. I think Ms. Penya is the one who asked us to look into the municipal court judge being added, and we did, so the judge can make that determination, and I would do the administrative part as far as the process or notification process as City Manager. And I think under that draft ordinance, those are the language we covered based on input or feedback from y'all as Commissioners, especially from the last meeting. In your packet here, the draft of the short-term rental application, what we did was put similar language there under Section 104 to make sure that the short-term renter, rental operational has been notified of everything applicable to what's in the ordinance itself. We again have the submittal checklist on the third page there that talks about what they need to provide, which is meet and bounds, description, survey, exhibit, deeds, payment for application, obviously a list of owners, operators, agents, sketch narrative describing the location of the available parking spaces, a sketch floor plan which identifies sleeping areas, proposed maximum number of guests, evacuation route, location of fire extinguisher. And then on the next page is just a draft, which is the information section. Second to last is the proposed sketch or rendering what they would provide, and then on the last page, obviously, that's the notification sheet, which gives them information, kind of the rules and regulations of being a short-term operator and what their guests need to know in relation to city codes and ordinances. So I think from the standpoint, I think we've tried to at least capture everything from the Commission's input and feedback on everything. So this, this ordinance, both the application and ordinance, is still a working document. If there's things you'd like to add, delete, input, we can obviously take that in as we move forward with bringing the ordinance application and the rest of Chapter 52 council for approval. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. What if there is a short-term rental that has not come forth and made out an application and is filed with the city? What, what type of a fine will they receive?
I would assume similar, Louis, to if you didn't file a permit, it's a double the fee.
Double the fee?
Yes.
Is it stated in here?
I think we've had that in there. If not, we can capture that because it's stated in our permit process that if you did not get a permit, it's double the fees, but we can definitely add that in there.
And is there going to be some type of notification put out to all homeowners in Castle Hills that, that this short-term rental application is available and required before they do business?
So ideally, if it goes to council in a final form, we would put out information through social media, our website, alerting residents, I mean, we use Facebook next door, any social media we can to let people know this is available now to come and apply if you're requesting or would like to be an operator of a short-term rental.
I think it needs to come out in the Castle Hills newsletter because I know a lot of people in Castle Hills do not have internet, don't have computers, they're not on social media, they don't, they don't see any of that.
Yeah, and we could do that, I actually allude to some of that because I do an article for it.
Yeah.
Alluding to that we're working on this.
Okay.
But definitely, once it's, I mean, timeline, you think about it, the reporter will be out later in November, so the next time will be January. So if we fine-tune everything, get it approved from council, then the January issue, we can put everything they need to know about what has happened with short-term rental, what they can do moving forward to come in and apply, and that might be a good timeframe to do that if approved by council next time.
Yes, okay.
Okay. That's just kind of a timeline because...
Good, because many don't.
Okay.
That's the timeframe we work on the reporter, so just letting you know that that's feasible.
Sure, okay.
Mark?
And one other thing that the council can do, not the Commission, what the council can do is, is have there be a short grace period from when this ordinance is adopted until the ordnance, until this section, for example, on short-term rental, which is brand new to the city, would be enforced. I've certainly seen that happen where there's a 30 or 60-day period after an ordinance is passed, that the City Council directs that it be, not be enforced with citation. But in addition to the doubling of the permit fee, there is a provision in the existing zoning ordinance, which is not proposed to be changed, that a violation of the ordinance is a misdemeanor if there's a conviction, and in the municipal court, that could result in a fine in the discretion of the judge up to $500. Again, whether that would be what the judge would do would depend on the circumstances, but in addition to the doubling of the permit fee, the city has other methods of enforcement through the municipal court. If someone simply decides we're gonna, they're gonna do this without registering, or they're not going to comply with all the local requirements.
And sir, would that be the court here in Castle Hills?
Yes, be our municipal court.
And just to point out that, Ms. Penya, that was a good point, and making sure, and Louis can address that too, about the process in going to municipal court and letting the judge make that determination, and then we do the administrative part of notification as staff and/or Louis, so appreciate it.
Mr. Rafferty, you mentioned something about outbuildings. Could you illustrate that a little bit more?
Louis, you want to, because I know you wanted to talk about that particular section. So I had some great input from Louis because, you know, he knows the Court of Ord- Code of Ordinances back and forth, so he works backwards because if he knows there's someone who's in violation, who's gonna get in trouble, you know, it's kind of working backwards with him, but it's a devil's advocate, sorry. Go ahead, Louis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To talk directly to the question you had about accessory structures, accessory structures are authorized in the code, the inhabitable accessory structures are authorized in the code, but they can only be used for non-paying family members or caregivers on an overnight basis. So what that can perhaps allude to with some folks who are perhaps real good at reading between the lines, if you will, they may be able to say, you know what, I've got a casita in the back that I'm going to rent out as an Airbnb, and I'm gonna tell you right now that I'm guilty of the same thing because in a different city, I'm kind of looking at a casita for my daughter in Albuquerque, and it is an accessory-use building, and it's absolutely legal where I come from, but the code in this city says that you cannot have paying individuals in those accessory-use buildings. So this is why we, we put that verbiage in that particular area.
They can live there, but they can't pay rent.
Correct, they're over, like overnight caretakers, family members, things of that nature, you can't live there, and obviously you can't rent it out. It specifically says cannot, there's no paying habitation.
Okay. But chances, does the city have a list of some of the residents that already are participating in Airbnb and these sorts of programs?
No, sir, we don't have a list. There is some talk on the street, and I'm aware of a couple of them. Obviously, since we don't have a code, there's really not much I can do about it, but there is, I'm not gonna single out an address, but there is one in particular that is probably gonna be in violation right off the bat, even if they come and register, it's just because of the nomenclature or the way it's set up versus the requirements from the international bill, it would be the Building Code, the IBC, as far as square footage per occupant of a bedroom, as they are advertising this particular resident as an Airbnb, residence as an Airbnb, there's already violation there, or there could be a violation. That's something that we'd have to dig in a little deeper into on the enforcement side, not so much on the, on the passing of an ordinance side, but as far as me trying to brainstorm a way to, to get this particular nomenclature to where they need to be, that that would be a challenge, but that's not something that I can't do.
I think again, that's why it was added under Section 50-104 under B about the occupancy. And it's on Louis' radar, it's been on his radar, but we don't have enforcement measures, and this will allow enforcement measures.
Another question. What if they apply, they pay the $250, then they pay, and then they don't pass the inspection? What is their grace period to get that property up to code and be able to pass? Is there gonna be a deadline, and would we make them reapply and pay the 250 again?
So generally, so to answer your last question first, we don't have them pay the 250 again. We do have a reinspection fee, and I'm gonna go analogous to building permits, we do have a reinspection fee. So on a regular building permit or CFO, occupancy permit on the commercial side, if they fail, then there's a $75 charge that's gonna cover the cost of the contractor-inspector to come back out on, on his time and re-inspect. As far as not being able to perform the function that they're trying to get, just like a building permit, if you didn't pass, you can't do it. This is just that simple.
And the, the fire inspection is $125, correct?
Yes, my understanding is that's correct.
Okay, so if they don't pass, are we paying the inspector $125?
Well, actually, Ms. Penya, that's, the application fee is 250, and what we set up was 125 on an annual basis. So what we can do is if, again, if they come in and apply for their annual and they fail the fire inspection, we could probably add the reinspection fee...
We need to.
With, with, related to this.
Because we would have to pay the inspector again, right? And we need to add on general and administrative costs from, for our city to pay the inspector. So if he charges 125, we can't charge them 125, we need profit, we need profit on the general and administrative costs, what it costs us to turn on the lights in our city.
Well, again, I think it could run, like Mr. Zamiron said, applicable to the reinspection fee of what is consistent with our inspector going out if someone fails.
Right, but we, but we do add on GNA for the City of Castle Hills on top of his fee? Because he's a subcontractor, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So yes, the, what is, what is charged now covers his time to go out initially and inspect, and the $75 right now that's in place is what we think covers the reinspection. Now, if we saw where things are different, that we might need to augment that, then we would, based on the cost of the service that they do for us, which is contracting. And we try to stay in line because our building inspector, who does our plan review services, we try to stay in line because they also do Chavino Park, Alamo Heights, Balconies, so they do all the smaller cities like us, so the charge is pretty standard across the board.
Is it 75?
I believe so, but I mean, we haven't checked really into other cities, but right now, 75 covers his time to go out and re-inspect.
Right.
And there's a possibility that they could fail again and have to go back out there.
But sir, it is my opinion that we need to add on GNA costs for our city for paying the inspector, because we're using our tax dollars to pay the inspector. So I feel that we should be making a profit on what we pay the inspector. So that, I'm, it's just a suggestion.
No, no, I understand. And I think again, that's why we look at it when we come and put the budget together, to make sure that we are covering those costs equally, you know, based on revenue coming in, that that cost is pretty straight, that the cost of doing that is the cost of revenue coming in, so we've looked at that. And if we gotta look at that come next budget time, then that's something we need to do. But we kind of always look at what other cities doing, just like we have done here. We recently did schedule fee changes per the state on residential fees, and we used kind of the standard of what Chavino Park and Alamo Heights went to. So we try to go across similar to what other cities are doing and affected because we do that, they had, they provide us that same service. So yes, you're, you're correct, we want to make sure that the cost is equal to what the money comes in.
Yes, sir.
Along those lines, Commissioner Penya, I think that, you know, if there's a separate fee for the inspector, we should have a separate fee for the fire inspection as well, because what if a resident has both? You know, we can't just charge the $75 and expect that to cover the fire too.
Well, I think, go ahead, Louis, but I think that covers whether the building inspector goes back out or the fire inspector goes back out.
What if they're both needed?
We could, we could do that, I mean, it's not out of the realm of possibility if that's a request.
I, I feel that we shouldn't be out that money.
But this is based on, again, their annual inspection.
Or a repeat inspection of the first time if they don't pass it?
Okay, well, I appreciate it, that's why we're here.
Commissioners, any more discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had one, I had one thing that I wanted to note, and I brought it up correctly a little bit earlier. In the tenant notification sheet that goes out to each tenant on the short-term parking, there's a section on parking, number two, and it says, "Parking is permitted in designated locations, no parking allowed in landscaped areas. Failure to comply with parking restrictions may result in a citation." I would like to bring up that maybe we ought to, at this point, add in there that overnight parking on the streets is not allowed. This way, we know that every tenant has received this. Other than it just be in the code, this way, we know that the tenants actually, actually get notification of that.
And Mr. Herndon, I, I wholeheartedly agree, but rather than saying overnight parking, I think our ordinance has the hours in it.
Correct, yes.
And I was gonna make a similar suggestion that, that, that it be very, very clear to these guests, because people who aren't familiar with our community are not gonna know unless they happen to be on a street that has one of those signs, and they're not on every street. It would be a good idea to include on the, on the notification document that parking over, parking between the hours of, I think it's 1:00 AM and 5:00 PM?
Two to five.
1:00 AM and 6:00 AM, two, two to six?
Two to five.
Two to five.
Yeah, I agree, the hours are way better, I just didn't know them.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be appropriate. The application, however, is not part of the ordinance. The application is provided for getting exactly this input for the, for the city staff.
Right.
But the ordinance itself doesn't have anything other than the, the statement that Mr. Rafferty discussed earlier, that the parking rules in chapter such-and-such apply. So this is great feedback to staff, so they know to kind of clean up the application to make it clearer to the potential users.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm actually talking about the tenant notification sheet, not the application so much.
Right.
Same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, yes, we can spell it out exactly like it is on the application, plus add the hours in, that would be fine.
I believe it's two to five.
Yeah, two to five.
Ryan, as you're writing notes, sir, I'm gonna ask if you could recap for us, I think there's about three items that are on there that you may have documented there.
Okay, just going back.
Oh, sorry, Ryan, just want to, anything else, Commissioners, before?
I think, I think you're gonna go over it, but on the draft that you just handed out, my first one had some language that I think on 50-104B7, the one, the new draft only has Chapter 26 of the City of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances. And the first one I got has a little more detail, it says, "Castle Hills Noise and Sound Level Regulation Ordinance Set Forth in Chapter 26 of this Code of Ordinances." My preference is, is that we use the second one I just mentioned as opposed to the one that's in the latest draft.
Actually, Ms. Baker, we, we, Louis and I made that change today, and I'm sure, not sure why it was captured, what we changed, it was basically set forth in Chapter 26 of the City of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, because we're not limiting to just noise and sound, there's other areas for possible violations under Chapter 26.
Oh, well...
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm, to me, it wasn't real obvious what Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances was referring to. So if it's penalties, then maybe if we had something, because I'm looking up...
I'll let Louis elaborate, because this is where our nuisance ordinance comes in.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I, I think that it probably is lacking the title after Chapter 26, the title, which is nuisances, should probably be added.
Okay.
The chapter itself, and there's also new areas of the chapter that are very robust when it comes to code enforcement and things that we can do, was just passed last October. But nuisances, the title of that chapter certainly can be interjected in there, just all, Chapter 26 is 100, almost 100% relevant for our discussion.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Commissioner Baker, is your preference to go with what was in the packet or what was handed out?
I, I think...
Or variation?
I think I, I would like to see some sort of meaningful reason to why Chapter 26 is important. So chap- Chapter 26 of the Castle Hills Zoning Code of Ordinances, nuisances, something that describes why that chapter is important is, is, because otherwise, people aren't gonna know what it is, it's kind of ambiguous. So yes, I, I agree with what... So, yes, I, I agree with what you said.
Okay. Well, we can, we can capture some type of, uh,
Description.
Title or description that describes potential nuisances that, um, people would receive violations for.
If all it said was nuisances, then you know why to look at it.
Sure, we can add that. Okay.
Anyone else, commissioners?
So, Chairman, uh, real quick, uh, just going back over, on the application, I have, um, us looking into, uh, a double fee for Ms. Penney, like Ms. Penney mentioned about non-permit, uh, and that portion if they didn't come in. And as Mr. Schnall says, we'll give some grace period to people, um, but after that point, if you haven't registered, then we will definitely, um, you'll be visited by Mr. Zamarone at some point, or, so, or someone related to our code enforcement office here with City Castle Hills. Um, here, I have Mr. Hernan about adding the hours in description under tenant notification for chapter 44, to make sure that we have those outlined. And then, as Ms. Penney has had, um, reevaluating some of the fees, especially reinspection fee for both building inspector and, um, fire inspector, to make sure and ensure we are covering those costs of service. And I think that's on the application. And then, obviously, as Ms. Baker pointed out, we can have a better description of 26, which covers all nuisances. And I think that's it on the draft ordinance.
Both of you?
And actually, the, the, the one I handed out on the DIAS that was different from the packet was supposed to be that one minor change under chapter 26 that Louie and I had done today. And that was the only difference in the red line that was in the packet.
Yeah, that's the only thing I saw.
What's the limitation for the bedroom square footage?
Sorry, sir?
The bedroom square footage, it's mentioned that there's a limitation for it. I'm just curious what that is.
50 square feet per occupant, sir.
I'm sorry?
50, uh, square feet per occupant.
One more time, I'm sorry.
50 square feet per occupant, yes, sir.
And I think, again, that's what Mr. Zamarone alluded to earlier about one particular place. Um, and that's kind of our only method right now of enforcement, is that occupancy. But with the implementation of the short-term rental, uh, obviously, that we could have a more enforcement in that manner.
So, you can actually have four people in a 200-square-foot room? Yes, you can stack 'em, right? Yeah.
Sleep together.
Yeah. I, 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 I have larger guest rooms than that, but I, I have bunk beds, I stack 'em for my grandkids.
Yeah, but one person in a 5 by 10 is even worse. Let me ask, do you believe that there should be a minimum that's higher set for, like, in other words, 50 per square foot with a minimum of 100 for the first person?
Uh, well, sir, that's what the IBC calls for, the International Building Code calls for, but recall that the IBC and all ICC codes are, uh, subjugated to local abandements. So, if any governing body sees fit to amend any chapter of the ICC or any sub-book of the ICC, you can legally. Obviously, there comes a general law-type situation with, as far as Texas law goes, but if 50 square feet seems a little bit prohibitive, obviously, some language can be changed, make it 75 or 100 square feet, whatever the case may be. That we can, we can amend it within our ordinance, it would require a subsection within, uh, zoning, uh, for, uh, single A residents, but it, there may be a little can of worms situation where you start getting into townhouses and condos and things like that, and with the square footage of that, especially when you're looking at 700-square-foot apartments that, that may come into town, at one point in town where you have a 10 by 10 and maybe even have a little smaller, an 8 by 10, well, does that mean that cohabitation can't occur? And, you know, it's really start getting into kind of a sticky wicket. But the answer to your question is, we can amend it how, uh, the city sees fit.
Commissioners, as a zoning commission, we make, uh, recommendations to the governing body, the city council. Ryan, were you gonna say something else?
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna say that, that's kind of similar, why we put in the swimming pool barriers under the international swimming pool and spa, because, you know, we don't have anything independently set up through locally, like Mr. Zamarone said, so we try to adhere to that, at least with our building inspector.
I know, and, and August, some of the points that were covered, some of the things that you'd brought up, so commissioners, thank you for, uh, the amount of discussion that we've had. And, uh, Mr. Rapley, Mr. Zamarone, Mr. Schnall, thank you very much for your input, uh, on all of these key pieces. And, uh, I'd like to repeat what I just started out with, is as a zoning commission, we make recommendations. So, uh, with that in mind, if I could ask, that we will accept a motion if someone would like to bring one forward.
Uh, Mark, as far as the things that have been pointed out and recommended, those gotta be a part of the motion to add or incorporate?
Yeah, I think, I think if there, you know, the, the question I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman, is are you soliciting a motion only in regard to the short-term rental portion of this ordinance, or on the entire ordinance that has already been vetted through both this commission and previous zoning commissions? Because there is one, um, section, um, in the material that Mr. Rapley circulated last Friday, uh, where it was inadvertently left in and it was supposed to be intentionally left out. Um, and that is, uh, some sections, beginning on page 48, um, and on 48 and 49 and 50, um, in regard to section 50.471. Those are, that was some sections that came through the zoning review committee on wind energy units that, um, on reconsideration by the, uh, a prior zoning commission, um, they voted to take that out as being really not necessary, um, in the City of Castle Hills. If you've ever been to a wind turbine area, y, you know that those turbines are huge and there really is no place for them in this community. Um, so, it seems, um, unnecessary to put in rules about wind energy units. If anything, it would be to say they're not allowed, rather than to, to have three pages in an ordinance about what they are and when you, where you can put them and things like that. So, the, the previous commission had voted to not include the wind ener, energy provisions, um, in the zoning ordinance. And, uh, when Mr. Rapley sent this out, I think that, just something that slipped through the cracks, um, so that if there was going to be an ordinance, excuse me, a, a motion to recommend adoption of the, uh, the entire redlined chapter 50, inclusive of the recommendations made this evening, um, by the commission, um, I would ask that it exclude 50-471.
And I think, from, from my standpoint, this has obviously been, been going on for a few years, and so we've, between staff that have been here and left, we've tried to capture everything, uh, in one document. And I think we've made a lot of, uh, good process and motion back into November, December of last year, and Ms. Baker was on that commission, um, but we've since then tried to capture everything that the last two or three previous commissions and previous city managers and previous staff have done work on this chapter 50, so...
I was gonna say, I was impressed by what the three of y'all have brought here and over that period of time. I've read this thing approximately five times in three months, and I, I think it's a good, it's a good document, and, uh, I would just wanted to thank you.
Well, I, you could tell, probably the best way to tell is the color difference, because some of the red line changes that are in there, that are actually red, are probably from two, maybe three years ago.
Yeah.
The ones in purple, I've tried to capture, uh, specifically since Ms. Thielen has left in December and the previous commission that Ms. Baker was on, those kind of are the changes that they've made in the spring in regarding chapter 50. So, that's the difference in color there. And I don't know if it was by design, but, uh, I'm glad it was a differentiation between color to show the timeframe of red lines and/or purple lines.
You can definitely see it in this.
There, there's some blue in there, too.
There's some blue, yeah.
Regardless of the color, it captures all the changes.
Again, uh, commissioners, uh, again, we make recommendations as a commission to the governing body. If you'd like to...
Mr. Schnall, I, I have a question. Is it appropriate to make a motion to pass an ordinance when we're asking for changes to that ordinance? Do we need to wait till there's a, a hard copy of it?
The commission makes a recommendation. Um, the, the, uh, packet that went out to the commission for this meeting includes the entire text of chapter 50 as it is going to, as it might be proposed by this commission. The only changes that I heard that directly affect, um, the wording of the ordinance are, um, are the, uh, but not even all of that, because, uh, the grace period's discretionary with the council, the permit fee is an administrative issue, um, that the commission decided not to put the actual fee in the ordinance, but simply delegate that decision to city council. Um, the hours of parking is on the tenant information sheet, it's not in the ordinance. Um, and the reinspection fee, again, is administrative, so the only thing that really is changing is the recommendation that you made, that the reference to chapter 26 in section 50-104B7 say nuisances. That's the only change that affects the ordinance itself on short-term rentals. So, if the coun, if the commission was ready to move this to the next level, to the, to the city council, a motion could be made that the zoning commission recommends that the city council, um, adopt the, a revised zoning ordinance in the form of the ordinance in front of this commission with the addition of the word nuisance in section 50-104B7. And that would capture what we're doing, and I, and, and as I asked, also deleting 50-471. Just those two changes, and you could, you could move this to the next level. You are certainly welcome. Um, it's been a long haul, um, and I appreciate the comments that were made about, uh, thanking, uh, those of us who've been involved with this, um, for a long time. I stand before you as the one person in this room who has been working on this since September of 2015, when I was appointed, um, to the zoning review committee and then chaired it. Our recommendations went to the former city manager in May or June of 2016, and it's taken almost three and a half years to get to tonight. Having said that, if you all wanna have another meeting the first Tuesday in December and make the decision at that time, that is certainly your prerogative, but, um, uh, you know, my judgment in having worked on zoning matters in this community since 1987, is that, that the product that came out of the zoning review committee, as modified by our zoning commissions, is a solid product that merits consideration by the, the city council. But it's, it's y'all's call. Um, I, I would suggest doing something tonight.
Would you like to end, Mark, about the ordinance that will have to be implemented to the occupancy tax?
Um, there's a reference in, um, the, the section, the, the, the short-term rental provision that says that the short-term rental property will be subject to a hotel occupancy tax, any hotel occupancy tax which is adopted on or after the, um, final adoption of the zoning ordinance. Um, we do not have a hotel occupancy tax now. Um, the city has resisted, um, having hotels or motels in the city limits historically. Uh, I have in anticipation that this zoning commission would recommend and the zoning comm, city council would adopt, um, uh, short-term rental provisions. I do have a draft of a hotel occupancy ordinance on the computer in my office, so we can have that moved forward, um, pretty expeditiously. I think it would be premature to adopt that before the zoning commission's recommendations were vetted through the city council, but we can do it at that, the same time or at the next meeting, after the city council adopts, um, revised zoning ordinance that includes short-term rentals.
I move that we pass the short-term rental ordinance, section 50-100 through 50-108, subject to adding nuisances in on 50-1047, I believe?
B7.
B7, yes. Only the short-term rental, that's my motion.
We have a first by Commissioner Baker? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Ananimos? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Long time coming.
Thank you.
The time is approximately 7:50 PM. Agenda item number five, discussion on potential additions to the recommended changes to chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. One last chance, and then I'll move to the next agenda item. Any discussion?
I just wanna ask one more time, is there anything else you need at this point to move forward with it?
Uh, no, sir, I mean, uh, the chapter 50 as is, other than what Mr. Schnall has said to remove, uh, there's nothing else that I'm aware of that the review committee or what the previous two commissions has worked on, uh, as far as chapter 50 as a whole.
And neither do I, Mr. Hernan. I think that, that it's been a very comprehensive look, um, and that it, it takes, it brings us, uh, up to date, so to speak, um, with, uh, other zoning ordinances that I'm familiar with. Um, and, um, so I don't have any suggested additional provisions at this time.
I, I do have one other question, and it relates to, since I hope council will agree and, and pass this ordinance, but at what point do we need to go back and amend other code sections that say short-term rentals are prohibited? Because we've got multiple different locations where if it's approved, will be, so do we do that now, or do we wait?
You can't do it now unless Mr. Rodriguez reopens item number four. But I think that, uh, since your motion, which the commission just adopted, only adopted the short-term rental provisions, uh, what I interpret that to mean is the following, and Mr. Rapley might want to be taking notes. Number one, that he update the sections 50-100 through 50-108 to reflect the inclusion of the word nuisance, as your motion states. Um, second, that he goes through the rest of the zoning, proposed zoning ordinance, where it does have the language that came from the zoning review committee that would prohibit short-term rentals in most of the residential districts, A, AA, AAA, B, C, D, I think. Um, that language would, would come out in his next run, and, um, because it shouldn't have been included in this run, taking out also 50-471 on wind unit, wind energy units. Um, and then that ordinance as a, in, in its entirety, comes back before this commission for what, what I would think would be one more look, um, one more public hearing, one more look, and then action to recommend it in some shape or fashion to the governing
Got it, Mark.
Any, uh, Ryan, anything else that...
No, no, I'll, um, I'll incorporate these changes, uh, and then, again, bring this forward to December and hopefully we can, um... this forward to December, and hopefully, we can, um, close this out for the entire chapter fifty with all the updates.
Okay, now, agenda item five, any other discussion at all, in regards to this agenda item at this point? Last time? No, no, we're on agenda item number five, currently.
The, any additional to fifty?
Yeah. There was a motion made for agenda item four already, which was open and closed? Correct.
Yes.
Which was open and closed. That, that's what this, this is discussion currently, this agenda item is strictly for discussion.
So, based on what Mr. Schnall had said, and we, uh, go back, red line change, we bring it back to the December meeting, and then, once it's included, like Mr. Schnall said, remove the short-term rental prohibits, uh, and then the other things regarding the nuisance. I'll capture all those, have a final document for the December meeting, uh, have one final public hearing, like Mr. Schnall said, and then, we can move the entire document with the updates, uh, to the council in December, if that's amenable to this commission.
Under this discussion item, yeah, I, I saw a couple of other spots, that there were some things, so, but I think a global check of some of the same terms, uh, you might be able to capture more detail of those changes. So, I don't wanna be redundant in what Mr. Schnall said, or yourself, but, uh, hopefully, we capture all of those.
And Mr. Zamarone will give it a look as well.
All right. There being no further discussion, uh, the time is seven fifty-six PM. Item, excuse me, agenda item number six, adjournment. Uh, commissioners, I request a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn.